If you are planning on speaking tonight, please fill out a public speaker form and bring it down to me and you will be called to speak. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. I would like to call the Planning Commission meeting to order. And I would like to welcome all to the June 13, 2023 Huntington Beach Planning Commission meeting. And while the Planning Commission welcomes public involvement and free speech, it rejects comments from anyone that are discriminatory, defamatory, or otherwise not protected speech. Those comments will not inform nor be considered by the Planning Commission and may cause for the Chair to interrupt the speaker. Such comments will not be consented to or otherwise adopted by the Planning Commission in its discussions and findings for any matter tonight. I want to thank you. And at this point, I would like to call on Commissioner Kennedy to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. And now, may I have roll call, please?
Yes, good evening. So Commissioner Adam?
Here.
Commissioner Acosta Galván?
Here.
Vice Chair Twining?
Here.
Chair Palman?
Here.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Here.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Here.
And Commissioner Wood. We have a quorum. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair Palman, before we begin, could I just make a brief comment?
Sure, absolutely.
So I think most of you know I've accepted a position in the City of Orange as their new city attorney. So I'm going to be relinquishing my duties here as your advisor. But we're very fortunate to have Deputy City Attorney Connor Highland. He's going to be taking over my stead. He's got a breadth of experience. He's advised planning commissions in some cities up north, and he brings to the city attorney's office and to this commission a bunch of wisdom and good advice. So I hope you'll trust him as you do me.
Thank you. I want you to know on behalf of the Planning Commission that we're going to miss you, and very much so, because you've been very, very informative and answered questions and made us feel comfortable as a commission. So thank you. And to you, Connor, Mr. Highland, we're looking forward to working with you, and welcome.
Thank you so much. I'm very excited to serve the city. Thank you.
Great. Okay. Now it's time for public comments for items that are not on the agenda this evening. Do we have any public comments?
We have no public comments on items that are not on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Now we have a public hearing item. It is the appeal of zoning administrator's approval of conditional use permit number 23-006 Huntington Beach Community Wireless Communication Facility. And I believe it's time, if commissioners have any disclosures, before we go on to the next part, we'll start with Commissioner Adam.
Thank you. I talked with city staff today. That's it.
Commissioner Kennedy?
I had a brief conversation with Mr. Vigliotta, and I did drive the site.
Okay.
I have no disclosures.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yeah, I visited the site, and I also live about .3 miles away from it, so.
And I visited the site.
Okay, and I have a few disclosures. I visited the site twice, and I attended a town hall where there were city council members and also planning commissioners there. And I reviewed the agenda prior to the meeting with Vice Chair Twining. And I also spoke with staff today. Thank you. That's it. Okay, now, staff has a presentation, I believe, at this point?
We do. Hayden Beckman is going to be giving our presentation. Before I hand it over, I just want to confirm, the city attorney is confirming, we don't have a conflict of interest from proximity. So just give one moment.
Are you cool? Okay, so shall we wait a couple of minutes? Okay, that's fine.
Sorry for the delay.
So we're putting the meeting on pause. I'm going to turn off for a second. Maybe? Okay, I think we'll... Everything's cool? Okay. All right, at this point, staff has a presentation.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Honorable Chair and fellow commissioners. My name is Hayden Beckman, senior planner, and I'm the project planner for this request. The proposed project before the commission tonight is a request to construct a new freestanding mono-broadleaf wireless communication facility at an overall height of 60 feet on a commercial property that's currently occupied by a church. The installation would include a four-sector array of four-panel antennas each that utilizes stealth design by disguising the new wireless facility within the branches of a faux broadleaf tree. On April 13, the Design Review Board reviewed the proposed project and recommended approval as proposed to the zoning administrator. Subsequently, at an April 19, 2023, public hearing, the subject conditional use permit was considered by the zoning administrator and approved with conditions. Following approval of the project, a 10-day appeal period began, during which an appeal was filed by an adjacent property owner, Christina Price, which triggered a new de novo public hearing before the Planning Commission. In a de novo public hearing scenario, the Planning Commission reviews the appeal as a new matter. The commission may make an independent decision based on information provided at the zoning administrator's action, as well as information presented to you tonight. Our staff report and presentation primarily focus on the issues raised in the appellant's letter. However, as the PC is aware, a number of correspondence has been received since the agenda was published, and that correspondence has been reviewed by staff prior to this public hearing. The subject property is located at 8101 Slater Avenue. This is on the north side of Slater, due east of Beach Boulevard. As I mentioned earlier, currently, the Huntington Beach Community Church is the existing site. It is currently ZO, which is the commercial office, zoning designation, and the general plan designation is CG, which is commercial general. The surrounding uses to the north and east in yellow are single-family residential. To the south across Slater is residential medium-high density, and to the west is a commercial general property. Here's a picture of the proposed site plan. It is depicted with Slater Avenue along the southern frontage. The proposed location of the freestanding monopole facility would be within an existing landscaped area within the parking lot. And in the northwest corner of the site, depicted here in blue, is an above-ground enclosure that would contain the ancillary equipment that supports the operation of a new facility. Here's an elevation view of the proposed wireless facility. The maximum overall height is 60 feet to the highest branches of the faux tree. Shrouded behind the branches, the panel antennas, as depicted here in yellow, would measure 55 feet high. This is one of three photo simulations that was provided by the applicant. This is a view looking north across Slater Avenue. On the left is a picture showing the existing conditions, and on the right is the proposed condition upon installation of the facility. Apologize, the screen is a bit dim. In this photo simulation, this is a view looking west across Markham Lane. This is to the east of the subject site. Again, on the left, the picture shows the existing conditions, and on the right is the proposed condition upon installation of the facility. And this photo simulation provides a view looking south from Windy Sands Circle. This is again looking south in the direction of Slater Avenue. On the left is the existing condition, and on the right is a proposed condition upon installation of the facility. In the Huntington Beach Zoning and Subdivision Ordinance, communication facilities, as wireless communication facilities are currently classified, are allowed uses in commercial districts. We do have a separate section that treats development standards and review processes for wireless communication facilities, and contained in there both design review and a conditional use permit are required for any new ground or utility-mounted facility. There are also exceptions to height limits that apply to the proposed project. Wireless communication facilities are allowed by right to exceed the maximum height of their zoning district by 10 feet. And in addition, the zoning administrator may approve greater height upon approval of a conditional use permit. The proposed project is, again, a new 60-foot ground-mounted wireless facility, as triggered by the CUP, and the proposed facility and its ancillary equipment enclosure currently comply with the development standards. The project complies with the commercial office standards for setbacks, parking, landscape, and all other applicable requirements. The facility utilizes stealth design techniques, meaning that the pole, the antenna, and support equipment are disguised as a mature broadleaf tree, and overall, the proposed project is also consistent with the goals and policies of the general plan. In the appellant's letter filed with the appeal request, the appellant makes four primary arguments. First, that wireless facilities should not be sited on commercial property as it does not align with the general plan or ordinances or wireless policy. As discussed in the staff report, the Huntington Beach Zoning and Subdivision Ordinance permits wireless facilities on commercial and industrial properties upon approval of a CUP, and encourages co-locating facilities when feasible and utilizing stealth techniques to screen facilities from view. As proposed, the facility would resemble a mature broadleaf tree to make it compatible with existing onsite landscaping and surrounding uses, and as such is consistent with general plan policies and objectives. The second argument cited in the appeal is that the project should not have been approved without due process verifying the applicant's submitted burden of proof statements or sole justification for validity beyond reception of the application. When filed, the applicant provided zoning justification letter that included project objectives and identified an alternative site analysis and site justification, which complies with submittal requirements. The project was approved by the zoning administrator at a duly noticed public hearing following the administrative review process. The appellant's third argument cites the project's potential to impact property values and rental incomes of surrounding properties. As outlined in the Huntington Beach Zoning and Subdivision Ordinance, the city's purview over applications for new wireless facilities is tied only to the aesthetics of the proposed facility. The city cannot make a determination on such applications based in part on potential economic impacts. Finally, the appellant argues that the approval will impact resale capability and rental marketability of homes near cell towers for the three surrounding residential areas. As previously indicated, the city's design standards and stealth techniques are intended to minimize impacts to surrounding properties, and no property-specific economic analysis has been provided to the city by either the applicant or the appellant. The city is currently unaware of any reported impacts associated with existing wireless facilities that are approved and located throughout the city. For purposes of illustrating the intent of code requirements for stealth design techniques, we're providing just a comparison. Here on the left is an applicant-provided photo simulation. Again, this is the view looking south towards Slater from Windy Sands Circle. And the property on the right is current conditions at Huntington Beach High School, where multiple freestanding monopole facilities exist on the same site that contain no stealth design techniques or compatibility features that would allow for it to blend into the surrounding area. As such, in placing a proposed facility adjacent to other mature broadleaf trees on the property and adjacent properties, the faux tree design is compatible with the surrounding area. At this time, staff recommends that the Planning Commission vote to deny the appeal and approve conditional use permit 23006 with suggested findings and conditions of approval. And staff are available for any questions from the commission. That concludes my staff report. Thank you.
Okay, so, thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions at this time? And let's see, I've got to put my little thingy up here. Okay. Commissioner Kennedy?
Thank you, Chair Palman. So I have some questions here. On the conditional use permit, where you've just noted, thank you for that, that the limit's 40 feet with the ability to extend 10 feet. So I'm just wondering why staff thought it was okay to go ahead and go to 60 feet? Why not just leave it at 40 plus 10 if so approved?
As you indicated, Commissioner Kennedy, 50 feet is the by right allowable height, and the request for 60 feet is from the applicant. And so, as I indicated, the zoning administrator and by appeal, the Planning Commission can permit additional height. I can't speak to, you know, the technical reasons behind it, but this is a fairly standard approach where the applicants for these facilities identify the necessary height for their operation.
Okay. Secondly, that picture where you show the broadleaf stealth compared to the high school, I mean, clearly, it's night and day. I know the intent is to show how minimized the view is, but one of the locations cited was the park. And as you can see, the usage of ground is minimized. Why would a park not be a better use for, I mean, just a portion of the park? It's a large swath of land, and frankly, it just seems more logical to take up a corner of that. There's still going to be plenty of use for the utilization of the park. So what was the thought on that? That may be for the applicant, or is that for you guys?
Is there a specific park that you're referencing?
Well, yeah, it was one of the locations. It was a long piece. It was adjacent to Newland in Slater. It was one of the 11 sites that was identified. And the reason they said in the footnote was they didn't want to take up park space. And I thought, you know, that's... So Commissioner, if I can jump in and answer that question, we generally wouldn't allow, depending on the size of the tower and the cost, something to be built on city park property because of Measure C. Okay. All right. And then, another thing that seems to be minimized by the applicant is the belief that there is not going to be any economic damage to the residential area. And I read all the documents. I did not see them provide a report substantiating that. And I also didn't see necessarily a report identifying that. But I can tell you firsthand that common sense is going to tell you that nobody wants that in their backyard. So for the applicant to say, not the appellant, the applicant to say, there's no cause for worry about economic damage, just ask yourself this question. Would you like that in your backyard? I mean, that's just how I look at it personally. I'd just like to hear somebody tell me why they think that they can justify that statement. Commissioner, if I could just jump in, I think some of this stuff is better left once we open the public hearing and hear from folks and close the public hearing. Okay, yeah, I'm not sure where these questions lie, so I want to get them out there to avoid having missed my opportunity. We'll have another chance. Fair enough. I got a lot of questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Kennedy. Commissioner Adam?
This may fall into the latter category, but the basis of appeal highlighted four concerns, Hayden. But I didn't see health risk in any of those concerns. It was all other reasons. But all of the public comment appears to be health risk related. I'm just trying to understand how the... Is that because of the appeal form only allows for certain categories, or is it just a disconnect?
The appeal form doesn't discount any particular category, but staff had to be responsive to what was submitted at the time of the close of the appeal period. So I did provide that disclaimer. And as you pointed out, subsequently, we received a lot more information. So it's not to exclude any one particular argument. It's just what we received materially.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Galvin? Acosta Galvin?
Yeah, I wanted to ask, what constitutes a significant gap in coverage for this?
I would actually defer to the applicant in that particular case to properly identify that.
Okay, I'll ask later. And then, are we, as the commissioner, are we allowed to consider health impacts in our decision-making?
No.
Yeah, I can give a little bit more to that. The city can't deny an application or consider health impacts proposed sites under current federal law. If the radio emissions meet FCC standards, then that's what we have to accept.
Thank you.
Okay, and I think we're through. I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes. Just one question, Mr. Hayden. Thank you so much for the presentation. I just saw on the last slide, it says that staff recommends denial, but on our agenda, it says recommends approval. Could you sort of jump back and forth where that change happened?
Yeah, I apologize for any confusion. The request before the commission is to consider an appeal. And so, in your action, if you were to deny the appeal, then the zoning administrator's approval would stand. So I think it's just a matter of wording.
Wording, okay, perfect. I just wanted to verify that. Thank you.
And there's no other commissioners except for myself that has questions, I believe, at this point, right? Okay. So I do have a question about the Cooper's hawk that was identified as nesting there, and I would like to know what the rationale was that there was not a required SEQA for that property.
So I can touch briefly on the exemption that the city is identifying and recommending to the commission to recognize. Under the classification that we identify, there's a certain spectrum of development that can be used to exempt certain projects. And so outside of there being any known testimony to, you know, endangerment of those species, it would not have been something that we needed to condition simply by virtue of there being existing laws and statutes that would protect certain species of birds. And I don't know if there's a better way to, I guess, explain that particular...
I can elaborate a little bit, which is to say, the SEQA was performed on the project, and in this case, a categorical exemption was applied based on the size and scope of the development. It meets the standards for a categorical exemption.
Okay. At this point, I think all the commissioner... Oh, wait, Commissioner Kennedy?
Thank you. So since somebody touched on NEPA, so there's already been that exemption, as you said, for some reason. But in the applicant's 54-page submission, one of the sentences said that the NEPA report is underway. In the next sentence, they say that, let's see, they were going to review it, basically saying that if there's any evidence of nesting or anything, they would accept that as a condition. To me, that means they would realize that maybe it's not a fit location. I should have cited the page number, but it basically says that there is a NEPA study underway. They've identified 72 different birds and wildlife. The Cooper Hawk was the number one on the list. It was not alphabetical, so I must assume that that means it's the dominant species. And then it basically said that something to the effect, I'm trying to find in my notes, and...
I'm familiar with the section you're referencing. And so, just to clarify, SEQA would be the state environmental disclosure process. NEPA is the federal. And as part of their federal licensing under the FCC, they are required to go through the NEPA process. That is above and separate from the city's permitting process. And essentially, they're going through that NEPA process now. If the project were to be approved prior to issuing a building permit, they would basically have to show documentation that they've satisfied all the federal requirements.
Wouldn't it be prudent to finish the study first and then convene to approve, as opposed to approve or deny, and then find, let's say hypothetically, it gets approved, and then there is a cause to now deny it because the study's been concluded and there's evidence of, you know, herding the birds or whatever the case may be?
It's ultimately a business decision, so perhaps the applicant can decide about the timing of that, but...
And I think if we can move these questions on to, let's open the public hearing. If there's hyper-technical questions? Yeah, got it. Thanks.
Okay, hold on one second. Got to find my thing. Here it is, right here. You have a question? Okay. Commissioner Rodriguez has one last question.
Yeah, just a question for the deputy city attorney. If we were to deny the project, what are the ramifications legally for the city, if any?
At this point, the applicant would be able to appeal to city council, and then it would go to them through the normal appeal process. There would not be any immediate ramifications for the city should the Planning Commission deny the application.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're done with Planning Commission questions. Correct? Yeah, okay. At this point, since there's no more questions, I'm going to open the public hearing. And do we have anyone signed up to speak? I see at least four.
We have four people signed up to speak. Please come down to the podiums and state your name prior to speaking. John Silverman, Ariel Strauss, Kenna Delsante, and Rick Cook.
Thank you.
If I represent the applicant, would you rather hear from the appellant first or the applicant?
It's your choice.
Okay. I do have a small presentation.
Okay.
And I will go fast through this because some of the material was already covered by the staffs. Good evening, members of the commission. My name is John Silverman. I'm a developer with SmartLink. We work on behalf of AT&amp;T in these sorts of new site acquisitions and developments. From supporting our first responders via the government FirstNet program, which is involved in all of our new wireless sites, to bringing reliable connectivity for people from working from home and students attending virtual classrooms, which has been a very important thing in recent years, the goal of AT&amp;T is to increase connectivity. If you look here, this is the actual original document, well, the image from the original document that AT&amp;T provides to us to show where their lack of signal is showing up. The red being the most extreme examples, of which the green would be the priority. Part of my job is to analyze both the zoning feasibility, but also the leaseability, and I'll go into that a little bit more in a second. But this represents the general area in which... But this represents the general area in which AT&amp;T was looking to increase its coverage. If you'll notice right now, where we're proposing it is towards the southern end of this green circle here, right beneath where it says Slater Avenue, or actually just the north. Due to constraints within our search ring, a feasible solution that met the city's code in closing our gap in coverage was found towards the southern end of the ring. This was originally a much smaller ring that was focused on Warner, towards the north of where the red is, but because of the limitations based on the available properties and interest from available owners, the decision was made to expand. So it's a bit cheesy, but we focus on five ABLES when we're dealing with any new site availability. We're looking at whether or not it's zonable, specifically whether or not it meets the city codes, and also to research what the ordinances and zoning maps would allow for based on the established law. We also specifically, and it is always important, to find a willing landlord, that's just leasable. Specifically, a landlord that is interested in dealing with a project like this, and a landlord who's interested in a long-term lease. For example, if a lease would only be a couple of years, that really wouldn't serve the project's goals. RF engineerable is basically the point of whether or not it hits the objectives of the specific RF engineers in charge of the project, which is dictated by the RF engineers in charge of the entire new site development project. Whether or not it's constructible here, that's not really an issue. Sometimes it's more of an issue with remote sites, whether or not it's accessible, et cetera, besides eminently constructible. And whether or not it fits the regulatory commission, that both from the city, from the state, and obviously, as with all sites, meeting the federal guidelines by FCC, which includes NEPA. We have two pillars of zoning, whether or not it represents a significant gap in coverage, at least visually obtrusive means. Significant gap or coverage is basically showing through the justification maps that we wrote, that the ability for service within buildings, not without, but within, is significantly This is the zoning map. This represents the area in which we're doing. We don't need to cover that all again, the staff already did so. These were the photo simulations, which I know the appellant did bring up a question of whether or not they were to scale. Let me explain how these photo simulations typically work. They are based on photography that are taken at the site from nearby streets, and then the renderings are made based on the drawings, which staff already shared with you. These are to scale. They absolutely represent the height that will be presented. But simulations is basically all we can do at this point because it has not been constructed, so. These are the different sites, which we just did. These are the alternative sites, and these were the 11 that was brought up, so I can answer any questions about that. Specifically, these are all the different sites that were considered. Westmont Park potentially was the one that was asked about, which is outside the search area, meaning it would not address the issues, the objectives of the RF, so it would not address the drop in service. Some of these slides, I'm sorry, some of these sites would be an empty car lot on beach. Unfortunately, owners did not show interest. A First Impression Full Service Sign Shop, which is on beach as well, again, did not show interest, and from my driving past it, it looks like that property might be shut down, so I'm not sure what's going on there. AT&amp;A, American Tax Accounting Services, which is 17479 Beach Boulevard, again, the owners did not show interest. The same is true of the CEVS at 16961. The Walgreens, which was not sufficient ground space because the specific land that is allotted for that project does not have any room, other than taking away some of the parking. Lakeview Park, which was considered, which is just out, just within the search area, but unfortunately, that park is specifically dedicated to soccer fields. And if we were to place it to meet the setbacks, it would interfere with the use of the park as it is, so we did not consider it because we did not want to propose building a wireless facility in the middle of soccer field. And also, we did briefly consider Huntington Beach Hospital because it's a taller building, but unfortunately, it was outside the search ring. AT&amp;T developed this search ring and all of them to identify an area which a new wireless telecommunications facility needs to be located, close to its significant gap in coverage. AT&amp;T searched for but did not find any viable co-location opportunities. I know the appellant brought up that we would have to require to show that there was any nearby existing sites within 1,000 feet. There is not one, and staff did do a double check and look to see whether or not any entitlements have been done within 1,000 feet, and was not true. So we did not have any co-location opportunities. Because the vast majority of the search area and beyond consists of residential, we did not consider any of the residential pieces, both because it would clash with the general plan, but also because typically those are not, you know, the sorts of projects that we were projecting. Propagation of the site plots are based on a current ATL design tool, project tool, that shows the preferred design of the network coverage. Those are specifically shown, that's where the data comes from, in the justification propagation maps that were provided to the council. The propagation referenced in this package is based on proposed LTE coverage. So basically, it shows, there is a slide that shows the current status of our coverage. Gray would be essentially insufficient if you were inside a building. Yellow would be only sufficient within outdoors, and green would be sufficient indoors, outdoors, or even within a vehicle. This slide shows the proposed active coverage once the site was put into place with the technology that we're proposing. And then, this would show the coverage specifically from the site by itself in a vacuum. I just explained that. Thank you for your time. I am open to answering any of those questions now.
Not at this point, I do not believe, okay? Everybody comes up and, okay? But thank you very much for your presentation.
We do have two additional speakers. If everyone could come down and line up at the podiums, we would appreciate it. Please remember to state your name prior to speaking. Jonathan McGaw and Scott Boxley, please also come down.
Okay. Next speaker is Kenna Del Sante. And the next speaker after you would be Rick Cook. If he could come up and be ready to go after you're done, please. Thank you. Mr. Cook, you can stand at the other mic, okay? Thank you. Okay, please go, and you have three minutes, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
This is my first city council meeting or planning commission, so this is an interesting experience for me. My name is Kenna Del Sante. I actually was an occupant of 8092 Windy Sands Circle for about 30 years. So actually, in some of the pictures, that's my backyard. That was my backyard for many years. I actually wrote down some notes because I, there was a lot of fun things to kind of hear in there. One of the subjects that he brought up, actually, just about the AT&amp;T coverage with the virtual learning, I went through virtual learning in that house. Never had any issues, never had any issues with any kind of property or anything like that. And I'm actually myself an avid bird watcher. My parents are in the appeal because they were the ones that actually saw, because me and my family have watched those birds, the Cooper hawks, over years. And the fact that they even haven't, we're talking about the NEPA and how that hasn't actually finished, even though it's something that has been brought up and is something that should be processed, because I've seen those Cooper hawks. They've landed in the tree in front, the pictures that you see, like, they've landed in that tree. I've been there and seen that myself. And to have someone just be like, oh, it's fine, it's just going to be this thing in the back, it's not going to disrupt. The families that are here, the families that I grew up with, I can see, they're people that I've known for the past 30 years here, because this is important to us. This is something that we value because this is our families growing up. There's a gentleman in the stands that has his daughter here. I remember when he was a little kid. I remember when his sisters were born. And we're just going to build this big distracting thing right behind the house, for what reason? For potential coverage of AT&amp;T? Like, it just, it doesn't make sense to me. Like, what is the actual function of this to have in our backyard? And Mr. Rodriguez, you said so yourself, that you live within proximity. Would you want this in your backyard? No way. It's not only an eyesore, because it's going to be strikingly different to the beautiful broadleaf trees that are already back there. Now you're going to have this big antenna that it would literally be in the backyard of my childhood home. I know that unfortunately, that home is going to be up for sale soon, but I know that the prospective people that are going to be there are not going to want to see that thing, because I have pictures from the outside view of that. And I can tell you for sure that seeing that big old cellphone tower there is not going to be appealing, not only for curb appeal too, for the potential owner of it, but just, I'm not, I'm not one to speak on the health issues, but.
Thank you, very much. Next, Mr. Cook. And then Ariel Strauss, can please step up to the mic there and wait for your turn? Okay, Mr. Cook, you have three minutes.
My name is Rick. I'm a father, I'm a parent, and I'm a firefighter, and like my job, like your job, is protecting my family. I know you guys have kids. Ms. Rodriguez, I know you run the youth soccer program. Ms. Pellman, I know you're a nurse, pediatrician, your husband's a pediatrician, it's all about kids. There's a school right down the street, and God we trust. God is about families, it's about protection of families. Every time we talk about safety, sir, that was from 1996, before 1G was created. This is 5. More Gs are to come. And I read it before, once AT&amp;T drops the anchor, they can go 20 more feet. That's a fact. That green little thing you showed on that map, we are the epicenter. Bottom line, it is too close. If you go, can you put up that picture of the house and antenna, 65 feet from someone's pillow where they sleep at night? It's not, it's not discreet, it's not stealth. That's just, you know, so when we drive on Beach Boulevard, I know I lived in Beach and Slater, I know where I bought. I'm paying taxes on a million dollar home. So whenever we drive Beach and Slater, I know everything kind of goes there, I got the homeless shelter, you know, we wrestle with the Salvation Army, the Tweaker homeless base camp there, and the hotel across the street, but we have a nice, called the Beach Villas, and I'm proud of it. And I raised my kids there. We're very passionate, and I'm holding my passion because I'm just so, I want to throw up, I'm so disgusted on this, because it's all about money. Please cite with the families. Every time we talk, Mr. Kennedy, you were on to great points. You keep getting silenced for some reason, and your public hearing wants to, they want to turn into a private hearing. I was so curious what else you had to say, because you were on point. But, so if we're not going to go based on health and safety from 1996, or that is a fact, because we can't, we can't, it's a can of worms, like, so it's just too darn close, it's too close. Yes, there is a Cooper's hawk, and all of a sudden, there's a, it's exempt all of a sudden, blah, blah, blah. And if the applicant wants to do it then or now, why does he get the choice? Why do you get to speak for seven minutes? So if we're not doing on health and safety, okay, we're not concerned about the neurological facts, effects, which are a fact, the cancer, which is also a fact, then why don't we do it on the environmental birds? Our green, our green belt has mallard ducks, so many different birds, because we run a green belt. And they rest and they nest and roost in that tree back there, in that parking lot, and it's right there. Ma'am, you're wearing a COVID mask, so that tells me you're overly concerned about health and safety. It's right here. This is health and safety for our families, for our kids, for the generations to come. So if we're not going to do on health and safety, you're not going to do it for the birds and the environment. Property values, it is a fact. That got silenced too, for some reason. Everything, it gets squashed. Property values will go down. They will. And if not, every time we drive in our complex, we're going to see the stealth, discreet, friggin' tower that is literally towering over us. Every time I look out my window, there it is, my front door, there it is. This tower should be placed in transient areas, on ramps, off ramps, ongoing, people coming and going. Put it to cemetery, Good Shepherd, dead people don't care about radiation and property values. Don't put it in our homes. I, I'm going to go sit down.
Thank you, Mr. Cook, okay?
I plead, I beg of you, please don't put it here, please. Cite with the, we're tax pay, you guys work for us. Look at AT&amp;T, they'll find another place.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Mr. Strauss? And then the next speaker, just a second, Mr. Strauss. If Scott Boxley could come, please, up to the mic.
Want me?
Up to the mic, you'll be next.
Welcome, welcome.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Strauss, for waiting a second. Okay, please go.
Absolutely, thank you. My name is Ariel Strauss. I'm attorney at Green Fire Law, representing the appellant. And I do appreciate that you afforded additional time for the applicant. I think it's entirely appropriate that you hear and have a complete record from the applicant who has a strong interest, and also from the appellant who paid the fee and took the initiative to decide that there is a reason that this site is not appropriate in this location. So I'd appreciate some additional time, and also the opportunity to answer questions later. There are many points, but I think I'll start with what's for me most shocking, and I'll go to the staff report, and that's on pages four and five. And there's a statement there, and I'll quote, that the city, quote, "cannot make a determination on the application for a new wireless facility as based in any part on the potential for impacts to property values." Then on page five, it continues, quote, "As discussed above, economic impacts are not considered a standard of review for wireless facility applications," end quote. I say this is shocking because if you read section 230.96E3, the section that determines that a conditional use permit is required whenever a facility is requested to exceed 10 feet beyond the allowable zoning, it states, "The applicant must apply for conditional use permit to the zoning administrator pursuant to chapter 241." Now, chapter 241 includes section 241.10A1, and that requires a CUP may only be approved to the zoning administrator or the planning commission, finds, quote, "the establishment, maintenance, and operation of the use will not be detrimental to general welfare of persons working or residing in vicinity." Now, this is a part I'd like to emphasize, nor detrimental to the value of the property and improvements in the neighborhood. So the applicant has a burden to establish that it will not be detrimental to those values. It's not on anybody else, it's not on the commentary folks who want to submit, it's not on the appellant, it's simply on the applicant. Now, the applicant submits, A, that essentially any complaints about property values are veiled complaints about health concerns, and B, that they cite to a study that people like having good wireless communications. Those two things don't determine the situation before you today. And now, in the communication I sent on Monday, there are a number of citations to many other studies that do show that there are in fact impacts when the cell towers are quite close. I also sent in earlier today some communications on a different facility, a 44-foot tall monopine, where several real estate agents had submitted letters as well. We also have a statement from a real estate agent in this community, I saw in the comments, saying that, "I could only say as a real estate agent for 32 years now, that the cell tower most definitely have some impact on your property value. I am most certain that a number of buyers would most likely be turned off by the visual presence of a cell tower being close to their residence." Now, everyone says this, real estate is location, location, location. It's your job, and not an easy job, to determine whether this specific site, in this circumstance, with this height, in this location, would have those negative impacts, or more accurately, where the applicant has established that they won't have those impacts. Now, it's subject to your judgment. You understand the community, you understand what's normal and what's not normal. But there's a problem here because application itself is deficient. The applicant, for some reason, used a one-page form. I attached this form to my letter. However, the city website putting forth the standards for an application is seven pages. Now, maybe you may think that that's a trifle of a thing, but the fact is that one of the requirements is that there be presented five photo sims, that the photo sims identify the angle of that photo, and also be photographs of close-in of the equipment. Now, we saw previously, and I don't need to put it back up, but we saw previously three photos, sims, not five. The photo sims don't identify the angle, so some of the contentions that the public has, that it's actually a sort of a angle that looks in a funny way, that doesn't really show the true difference between the height of the proposed tower, the building, and existing trees, have some legitimacy because it hasn't actually in fact complied with the requirements in the application form. And then with respect to those close-ins of that equipment, if you were able to see the equipment, say, you know, with those many arrays, and identify the way which it actually is shielded, as they describe it, with cloth, whatever it is, you could assess for yourself, will it be glint from the sun? Will it show through? How far will that shadow fall? These are very important questions because it's the south of these properties. The sun is going to be backlighting it most of the time. And if somebody sees equipment, they see industrial activity, see something that looks like a plastic tree, they don't have to be concerned about health impacts, to say, that's out of place. If I have a choice between House A and House B, I don't want to see that from my window, I don't want to be in my yard with that, that's just not, I'd rather have something else. And that is, the ultimate question has to be answered here. And that is, the ultimate question has to be answered here. And I don't see anything the applicant has said that explains why that is not a serious consideration, or why their application in fact does comply with the requirements the city has put out. Now, in the ordinance, there's another element that's also quite seriously missing, which is a requirement to co-locate when it is feasible. There has to be a search of 1,000 feet around, identify all antennas. Unfortunately, the, what we received and what we've seen today, and also in the administrative record before you, is just identification of macro towers by AT&amp;T. That's plainly not all towers. Under federal regulations, there's an entitlement to raise a macro tower by 20 feet and also expand it by 20 feet, regardless of the zoning in that area. There also is an entitlement of an applicant to increase a small cell by 10 feet, or 10%. So there are ways to expand these other sites, and a search ring is not a fixed thing. A search ring is predicated on the strength of antenna, the nature of antenna, the height of the pole, the intervening terrain, the angle of that actual antenna itself, and the way in which it is, it is programmed. These questions are not explained in any way by the applicant's materials, but most fundamentally, that map does not exist. It's not in the record. And without it being in the record, there's no explanation for what would happen had the applicant tried to put it on a Verizon pole, for instance, or a T-Mobile pole. Because these different, these carriers do in fact have agreements between each other to allow that type of thing to happen, and they're entitled under federal law to do it despite whatever the public might think or the commission might think. So when it comes to the question of whether something is an effective prohibition, the applicant is not entitled to put in whatever they want, they're not entitled to have the exact coverage they want. They have to have substantial filling of that gap. So substantial means there may be some gaps, they may only get, you know, two-thirds, and you, they may only get part of it that has the most important, let's say, customer base or something like that. And so that's why it's critical that they show some alternatives. For instance, if we think the tower is too tall, what would happen if it was 50 feet? How much coverage would you get? How much of that gap would be closed? We don't know the answer to that. If they were to co-locate it on one macro tower that they showed to the far, to the north or to the west, how much would that close? Those questions aren't asked and they're not answered. Now, we've talked quite a bit about, at least others have, about NEPA and CEQA. As also has been mentioned, the health effects of FCC compliant radio frequency emissions cannot be used as basis for denial by the commission. That's unfortunately a fact. But there are two things, or there are many other things that can be considered. First, if the applicant, the application is simply deficient, it need not be approved. If the application has failed to comply with federal law, which in fact is a requirement under the city's wireless code, that the applicant demonstrate that it has complied with the FCC regulations and all other state and federal laws. Now, NEPA is a requirement under the FCC regulations that the applicant demonstrate that there will not be significant environmental effects of a certain type. And if there are, they have to submit something called environmental assessment, an EA. Now, while it's true that the EA could be submitted later in time in theory, before anything happens on the ground, the problem with that is that NEPA requires an assessment at earliest possible time, so that it's not predetermined in practice. If the applicant identifies a tower, does engineering, shows up here, tells you I need it, gets an approval, I mean, how much leeway do they really have? Are they going to really show up later and say, sorry, we, we didn't do it right, we're going to come back? And it's just, it's not, it's not a realistic way to consider things will happen, and it's not the appropriate standard for NEPA. So the appropriate approach would have been for the applicant to identify these hawks. Because a Cooper's hawk is a migratory bird protected by the Migratory Bird Treaty Act that is enforced by the Department of the Interior. The Department of the Interior has notified the FCC that, and there are citations to these letters as well, that migratory birds have a very high incidence of death around cell towers. Some of it is because of cell tower collision, some of it is because of entanglement in cell tower equipment that wouldn't naturally be there in a normal condition and that birds are not accustomed to it. So whereas maybe a twig or something would break or bend, the cell tower equipment does not. There also, the FC, the Department of Interior explains, is a high rate of mortality from FCC-approved levels of RF emissions. Now, the FCC can require, and the Department of Interior can insist, that applicants consider that environmental effect within the federal regulations, even if the commission cannot. But something that's important to also recognize that this tree, this faux tree, this plastic lad, lading of the antenna, the radio emissions inside that tree will be far exceeding the human exposure levels that are allowed. Now, that itself is not a violation because humans are not allowed on the tree, there are signs and other things, right? But the birds, they are on the tree. So any consideration that that will have, that that will be harmful to these birds, is permissible, because it's not within the FCC regulatory limits.
Can, can I ask you?
Please.
Can I give you another minute to kind of wrap up?
Yeah, very well.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your patience. So there are a couple other issues, and one is quite straightforward within the, the city's code and also the noise ordinance. And that is a question of whether the noise that will be generated by the Generac brand generator, the 20 kilowatt generator, will exceed the standards in the noise ordinance. I saw in the staff report, or perhaps it was the decision by zoning administrator, simply a statement that the noise levels will be acceptable. However, I didn't see a discussion of the actual output of these generators. I did look, and it's included in my letter, a data sheet on this generator, or a, a Generac generator at a 20 kilowatt level. It's advertised as quiet, and it far exceeds at 23 feet the allowable levels that would be across a residence line. But the residence is, the property line that is, is only 10 feet away approximately. So that is a very serious issue that's simply not addressed whatsoever. It's also not restricted in any way by the FCC. Now, if I could just, obviously then there are then the actual pollutant emissions from this diesel generator as well. And those issues are to be considered under CEQA, special noise impacts, special pollution impacts. Those are not conventional impacts for what's known as a small facility. And I explained in my letter that the small facility exemption...
Okay, I, I have to like, cut it off at this point.
I do object, but I also do accept your determination. I do feel in the interest of a fair and full hearing, it's important that both the appellant and the applicant have the opportunity to present a proper record, and it's very hard to do that, as I'm sure you understand, in 10 to 12 minutes. So I would appreciate another minute if you'd allow.
One more minute, that's it.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. I also hope that you'll ask some questions and I'll be able to come back, but for now, I appreciate it.
I believe that the planning commissioners will.
I hope so. Thank you. So with respect to CEQA, the CEQA exemption that was applied for, or that was actually approved by the zoning administrator, is known as a small facilities exemption. Now, the small facilities exemption doesn't define what a small facility is, but in 2022 there was a case that I discussed also in my, in my letter, known as St. Ignatius Neighborhood Association, BC, in County of San Francisco. And there, they determined that the way you should determine whether something is small is by comparing it to other facilities in that area. So for instance, a 90-foot tall light standard was not small, and it was not exempt. Something that emits unusual characteristics, and I believe Commissioner Kennedy, since maybe perhaps that's what you're asking about, the hawks. Impacts to hawks, impacts to noise, impacts to pollutants from the diesel generator, those are not conventional features of a small constructed site in this area. And so I think it's quite plain actually that this exemption does not apply, both because of exceptional, unusual circumstances, and also because simply it is not a small structure within the meaning of CEQA. Now, if you were to apply CEQA, that would not be a denial of the project, that would simply, per se, that would be going through the process in an appropriate manner, and would not implicate federal regulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now we have Mr. Boxley, right?
Hi.
Hi. Let me, hold one second, let me ask Mr. McGraw to please come up to the other mic. Okay, now you can go, Mr. Boxley, okay?
That's what my first wife said. My blood pressure just went up immensely, just listening to that gentleman with all the things that he said. I'm here because we're property owners, I lost a tenant because of the towers going in, they sent emails to you, they were to object to the cell tower. So there's, there's a loss of income right there. I'm in the process of looking for a new tenant for that house at 808 One Wendy Sands Circle. So you'd say there's no economical downside. Huh? Two months now, I've been in without a tenant. Can't find somebody that's suitable. Had a perfect tenant. Two, two people that just were perfect. You can ask Rick at Spoke, he loved the tenants. I got a message from him today that they dropped off the keys finally for the house, and Rick had already taken their trash cans in that they had put out. They have a great little community there. And there's other environmental things, such as bees that are affected by the cell tower. Remember when we brought, got cell phones, couldn't put them up to your head too long? You couldn't carry them in your pocket, you're going to go sterile, you know, kinds of things. So things are not being talked about or looked at. There's other things that are, are wrong with this cell tower so close to people that understand, such as the school, I understand, they've already beat you down on two of the sites that were going to go in a park next to Lakeview. There's, there's just, got to be a better site or a smaller one that they can put up of, I don't know, size, or maybe deflect the things away from the neighborhood. I mean, 1,000 feet would be on the other side of Slater, so let it go towards Walgreens and, and something else, instead of having the site go the way that it's going to affect us in Beach Villas there. There's just a world of difference between one tower and another. Sent a message to you, both my wife and I, about the issues of, of the bird, that doesn't seem to get your interest. We have our son and granddaughters coming in to, hopefully, they will not be objected to an area here that would be a cell tower situation. But I've lost a tenant, two months, no pay coming in from that. So, I mean, there's, there's a number of different things that just doesn't seem right that's not being considered or looked at, I think. Gentlemen used up extra minutes? I'm going to cut mine short.
Thank you, Mr. Boxley. Mr. McGraw?
My name is Jonathan McGaw. I live in the neighborhood to the north of the proposed site. I've worked in the electric utility industry for better part of 37 years, so I understand regulations, requirements, citing, permitting, all the environmental elements that go into the issues that you and your staff and the community are dealing with. I wasn't planning to speak tonight, I didn't come here to speak, but one of the things that I've learned during my career is, starting a project before all the studies are done, spending money at risk without knowing the, the outcome of the studies. My recommendation would be, take the time to complete those studies before the planning commission approves moving forward with this. And in the meantime, while you have that time, some of these exceptions that you're being asked to approve, like the height of the tower, 60 feet versus your requirement of no more than 40 plus 10, have the applicant do an, an assessment to look at what is the change in the coverage if the tower is lower. And then the other piece I would ask you to consider is, or your staff to consider, is, of course, no one wants it in their backyard. I get it. I, I've lived that and breathed that for a long, long time. So my recommendation would be at least take the time to understand for each of those different sites, how many homes, how many people will be impacted by it. So at least you can feel you've done your due diligence around minimizing the impact to everyone in the community. So that's what I wanted to say. I appreciate the opportunity to speak, I appreciate your staff and the difficult work that they have, and of course, you know, the, the sensitive nature of what you do and how you do it, and it is not an easy job. So I appreciate you, thank you for taking into account our community, and thanks for all you do. Appreciate it. Complete.
Thank you, Mr. McGaw. We have no more speakers. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cook. Okay, so, let's see, I'm going to close the public hearing. And at this time, it's time for the commissioners to deliberate, so Commissioner Twining.
Thank you. I had a, a list of questions that I, I have, but I'm going to just bypass those because I'm sure my colleagues up here are going to ask them. I'm just going to make a statement. And it, it basically, it's, I'm having a really tough time convincing myself that this CUP should be approved. Most cases that come before this commission have two distinct, often convincing sides to their respective positions. This particular project has virtually zero support from the surrounding neighborhoods. I personally received over 30 emails and letters in direct opposition to this project. I've received exactly zero communications in support of this project. Everyone of us sitting up here this evening are volunteers, appointed by our duly elected council members, or in other words, elected citizens of Huntington Beach, including all of you sitting out there tonight, those who spoke so passionately. In reading the applicant's documents supporting the development, and it was a very well put-together document, I can't help but take notice of why we can't reject this CUP. I couldn't disagree more with these characterizations, one size doesn't fit all in, in communities and neighborhoods. Government doesn't always know what's best for our communities and neighborhoods. I have three things I've taken away from my studies of this, of this CUP application, and the citizens' concerns with the project going forward. One, there's a really, there's a very real fact that the marketability of the surrounding neighborhoods is, is an absolute certainty, that there is a real potential for significant decreases in property values estimated by several experts to fall in the range of somewhere between 2 and 30%. And three, the aesthetics of this pole are not suited for this neighborhood. For all these reasons, I will not be supporting the, the CUP. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Twining. Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yeah, I have a question for Mr. Silverman. Please. So there was some discussions about the, the report that wasn't finished. I believe that's the NEPA report?
That's right.
How much time do you need to finish that report?
So, just to be clear, the NEPA report is part of the federal guidelines, and they are always completed prior to construction. Typically, what we would suggest is that they be on a condition of approval, specifically that prior to the issuance of any building permits, that we would have that study complete and that it would be sufficient under the federal guidelines. Thus, if we were to somehow fail those, that evaluation, then we would not be issued, and AT&amp;T is more than comfortable with that because they don't want to endanger any species. But typically, those studies are not done prior to commission, to zoning, in these projects that I've worked on before. They are started, but the priority is to have them evaluated through the federal government once we are a little bit closer to construction. And that's one of the main goals of the next few weeks and months.
So you said, give me a date, not a date, maybe timeframe, two, three months?
I don't know, I mean, sure, yeah, two or three months. But concerning the, the planning, there is a federally mandated, you know, shot clock that is to be considered. We submitted this application on February 22nd, which would mean roughly, based on our calculations, that shot clock would be up as of July 24th, I believe, given with the, the weekends and non-business days. Obviously, AT&amp;T would be more than happy to enter into a tolling agreement, specifically that the city would have a determination by a certain date and time that could go past that period. Specifically, if the city was to require that environmental analysis under NEPA is, be completed, then, you know, we would try to work with that. We're not trying to hide anything, that's done for literally every single project.
Great. And then, is that project paid for by you, the applicant, or?
Yes.
By the city?
No, it's from, it's part of basic compliance with these projects for the federal guidelines. So even if they had not come up at all in these proceedings, they would still be accomplished on AT&amp;T's dime, yes.
Okay. And then one more question, I know there's concerns from some of the residents regarding the generator, diesel generator. Is there any alternative methods, sustainable methods, that cell towers, in your experience, have used, such as batteries, solar, solar panels?
So, you know, in my experience, solar panels are a possibility, but not without taking significantly more land, specifically would be impacting the use of the church. And typically, they're not sufficient for maintaining, especially with the kind of shading that we're going to be getting in that area, because...
that we're going to be getting in that area, because of the significantly tall trees that line the property. To be clear, the generator will not be running most of the time. It only runs every 46 weeks for a period of about 30 minutes, to be tested to make sure it is still operation. And is only in operation for any extended periods during emergency loss of power, and to be shut off the minute the power is restored. Specifically about noise complaints, and, and not a noise complaint, but a noise ordinance, we also always suggest that, you know, as a part of a condition of approval, that we would show that through a noise study, that we meet the city's zoning noise ordinance prior to the issuance of any building permits.
Okay. No questions, thank you so much.
I'll just stay here to be available.
No further questions here.
Commissioner Adam.
Commissioner, may I respond regarding NEPA?
Let's let, you know what, can you hold off? I will let you come up at a later point, okay? I will ask a question, so you can come up, okay? But I, I don't want to influence the flow here. So, thank you. Commissioner Adam.
Thank you. So, Mr. Silverman, I noticed that on the three renderings, how, how were those view shots selected? Were they selected based on your guys' experience, was it based on the community input?
No, they were selected prior to the first hearing. We typically go-
By who?
By, by you guys, I'm just curious.
Specifically by the contractor, who handles the renderings. But we always ask that those contractors prioritize the streets that are nearby, because it really would not impact beach, we did not include beach. So, we focus on Slater and the two residential streets above.
Okay. And so-
To the north.
When they're taken from just, I guess, just standing, right, just, just traditional standing?
Yes.
So, it'd be, I mean, I think there might be some goodwill to potentially offer up some more, some more. I don't, I didn't get a whole lot of, usually renderings give you a sense of confidence. My company does renderings, those, I feel like there could be some improvement on the different perspectives, I think some dimensions would be helpful. I mean, I know they're to scale, but it, it's a photo, and then it's embedded with a PDF and a, so I, I guess I would, I would enhance the technical aspects of those and do some more of them.
How so?
What's that?
How so?
You could use a drone, you could do, there's, there's a number of techniques that you can use to-
No, specifically from what angles, would the commissioner?
Well, I don't know, maybe ask the community, I mean, that sounds like you-
The community is against the project.
I know, but at least you-
The ones that are speaking here today.
But you may want to, I'm just-
Would like to point out also that it is not a significant portion of the community. 500 feet from the project, every single business and residential structure was identified. The tiny percentages here today.
Okay. I'm just, I'm just making, I'm just asking, maybe, 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 maybe the folks in the, and it could, could act, could advise where they would like a couple more, I mean, there was-
We'd be fine with providing any more photosimulations.
Okay.
From any suggestive angles. I don't know if they use drones, but, I mean, we could ask.
Okay. All right, that's all I had. And I had a question for city staff on the, is the exemption, sequel exemption, is that publicly noticed? Or is that held internally? Is there a requirement?
We always include the sequel determination in our noticing, so it has, it was a part of the, the general noticing for, for tonight's hearing.
Okay. Was there any comments on this exemption itself, or no?
I believe the appellant's letter addressed it, but that's the, I believe the only known comment directly on sequel.
Okay, thank you.
Can I also make a comment on the picture?
No. I'm sorry, no. That's okay. At this point, you're done, Commissioner Adams? Okay, Commissioner Kennedy.
Thank you. Hello, Mr. Silverman.
Hi.
I've got a couple of observations, a couple of questions. So, my first question, is there a difference between a 4G LTE tower and a 5G tower?
Well, this project actually is rated for, specifically for 5G as well as 4G. So, yes, there is, but specifically not in the dimensions of the tower, not typically. It would be in the difference of what antennas are attached to the tower.
The reason I ask that is, in reading your, not necessarily yours, but in reading all the, the documentation, I, I really didn't see any, it looked like you were focusing on the, the approval of a 4G LTE tower, and I figured there was a difference, so, you know, my, my fear would be, you get the lesser approved, and then you bring in a lot of different 5G components that will add to, you know, the potential RF. I know we can't really consider the, the radio frequencies, but let me ask you a couple of other questions. So, you, you said you were not able to co-locate, a gentleman brought up about the macro tower, but let me ask you this, once you put your flag in the ground, I would imagine the other carriers, if you couldn't co-locate, there must be sparsity with other towers, so wouldn't you think that all of a sudden you will be now the co-locate location of choice, now that we're just adding to additional output, because everybody else wants to come to your tower now?
I can't speak to what other carriers need in the area. I don't have any of that data, as it's proprietary. But specifically, if it was to be proposed, then it would be considered. But specifically this project, and which is before the city, is regarding this 4G tower. And I know it was brought up in the appellant's letter, that specifically that the voice calls are not considered as part of 4G, but I would like to remind that 3G has been sunsetted at the beginning of this year. So, all voice communications and internet and whatnot is actually supported through 4G LTE, when it's not specifically through wire, wireless in the, in the house.
Understood. I, I thought the, the one lady made a pretty good point, that, you know, one of the premise of the tower necessity is the ability to learn at home and things like that, but, you know, I feel like, however it was done, I think that the current structures did provide that. That's more of an observation. My next question is, I was reading the, the MPE, the Maximum Permissible Exposure Table, and when I saw that table, there's a lot of different three-letter abbreviations. None of them, though, were the WCF, which is what you guys reference every time you talk about your tower. I'm not even sure what WCF stands for, but in your MPE table, where it was showing outputs, there was no listing of the WCF. So, maybe we can walk through the table, that was, that was an observation.
Just to clarify, WCF is just referring to the city's description of these sites, which is a wireless communication facility.
Okay.
It's not a technical term for any of the equipment.
Well, when I was looking through the legend of the, of the table for MPE, I, I thought I would see it in there as, as, you know, synonymous to what we're talking about, so maybe I can go back and look at that table. Beyond that, another thing that kind of comes to mind is, so you talk about 20 panels, if, if there was an approval, is that a finite number, or can you come back later and add additional panels?
Not without further evaluation from the city.
Evaluation, or approval from a body?
Including approval.
Okay. And who would, who would give that approval?
We would have to go through the same process we're going through now.
Is that factual?
I mean, it would all be contingent on what's being requested, but yes, based on the hypothetical, additional would require additional review. We'd look at, we always look at it on a case-by-case basis when they submit.
Right. But that's you, does it come through planning, come through city council?
City council is really a, a, a appeal body in this process. We go through the zoning wireless communication requirements, and it could start out at the zoning administrator, it could be directly to the planning commission, it would really depend on the scope of what they were proposing and how they were proposing to expand.
Okay. Another thing, in your legend of the signage that would be appended to the fence, it looks like you, you're, you're selecting or you've been mandated to use sign 2B, which basically states all, all state warnings that this site may have RF remittance exceeding general population exposure limits. So, I'm just wondering, why would that sign be placed on the fencing, based on your documentation, if there's no fear of RF?
Well, it's typically cited on the fencing or somewhere else within eye level of the specific lease area. If it was merely put on the tree at the level of the antenna, then most people would not be able to see it, as the antennas top out at 55 feet.
Right. But what about the verbiage, exceeding, you know, levels of safety? I mean, do, I, I just don't see how the radio waves could just be contained to such a small silo that, that they're not going to spread out.
Well, they're not, they're not contained.
Right.
They're, the whole purpose is to spread out, and so that other people can get better connectivity, not just within the immediate area. But specifically, it's concerning standing directly 23 feet in front of the panel antennas. And the panel antennas, again, would be 55 feet up, and they will top out at 55 feet up in the air. And nothing, I don't believe there are any structures or sleeping, or whatnot, within 23 feet of the antennas.
I, I understand that, but I don't think the radio waves know that.
They, this is based on-
So, these are just observations, I mean, I, I know we can't consider these types of things, but when they're stated in, in your, your documentation about the exceeding state laws, and, you know, it's there for whatever case may be, I thought it was kind of ironic that even the, the preparation certification made the worker sign off, basically waving off that he understood there's potential hazards, and he signed the preparer certification. I just, I just see irony in that. So, with that said, you've answered my questions. I think there's been a lot of concern raised that, that is viable, and the attorney for the appellate, I think, raised a lot of concern regarding unanswered questions or non-conformity on application protocols, and there's just a lot of uncertainty, I, I just have to speak honestly on that, so with that said-
Didn't the applicant address that?
Certainly.
Okay. So, just to be clear, the city did find that the application was complete. I understand that the application that the appellant's attorney is discussing is available on the website, but we submitted what was considered sufficient by the city staff. If there was anything wrong with the application, or if it was considered incomplete, which it often is in these sorts of projects, we would have filled it out differently or provided new material prior to this point.
Hold on one sec, we have two more commissioners, and then I'm going to jump in at some point here. So, Commissioner Rodriguez.
One last question for staff, can I ask it, or?
Certainly.
In your experience, have you heard or seen any negative complaints from neighbors in existing surrounding cell towers that exists, exist throughout the city?
We did inquire with our code enforcement staff, and to their knowledge, there have not been any recent complaints about the existing operating facilities in the city.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Twining.
I read someplace in all these documents that, maybe I misread it, but you have the option during construction to extend this tower up to 10 to 20 more feet, so could it go from 60 to 70, or 70, or 60 to 80, or is 60 it? That's it?
So, that's not accurate. Just to be clear, and I'll clarify here, the, what the appellant is bringing up in terms of possible extension is for a later approval potentially, and is not part of this project. We are not proposing to go above that. And as far as I understand it from AT&amp;T, there is no current plans, and these are forecasted out years in advance to extend this tower. So, you know, basically, he's talking about a federal guidelines of 6409, that's a possibility in some of these sites, but that is not within AT&amp;T's plan or consideration at this time. And it would not be through the construction process, it would not be, it would not skip the planning procedures. Even in that case, it would be a separate application that would have to be evaluated and approved or denied. It's, it would not be, we would not be able to just tack on extra feet before we got to building to evaluate our structure, and we wouldn't try that.
Commissioner Acosta Galvitt.
Thank you. First off, is there anything that the city could propose in our purview that could diminish the impacts to the community, like with stealth or the height of the project?
As the project is currently proposed, they are meeting with all of the applicable zoning requirements. Anything outside of that would be the purview of the decision-makers, if they were to deliberate and, and take a vote on that.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Kennedy.
One final question, sir. When I read through the site, the 11 sites that were identified, either I misread it or you misstated, the, the vacated, what's known as the sign, a location on Beach Boulevard, great location, commercial, not really a lot of residential, and then across the street, the, the empty car lot, I read that you stated they did not reply, not that they weren't interested. My belief is that they maybe didn't receive your communication.
No, I sent certified mail for both of these. Myself personally, I also called specifically to the landowners, and I also tried to find email or property managers on the site, but specifically none, and I did not say they were not interested, I said they did not show interest.
On the document, it said they didn't reply, I mean, I guess that could be synonymous with not showing interest, but were you able to reach him?
No. I mean, other than that, I sent certified mail to the registered addresses, so.
Okay. You, you would think, because they are very lucrative, and as a commercial piece of property would certainly benefit from it, that almost anybody, especially that gentleman, or whoever owns the, the empty lot there on Beach Boulevard, would be all over a conversation.
So, in my experience, some of the reasons why someone might not, and it's just speculation, if it is an empty lot and is in the process of being sold, or looking for sales, then entering it into a long-term lease would complicate that process. Additionally, there are lots of businesses in which turn down this opportunity all the time, because it does not fit with their soon-to-be goals. For example, we also considered the Lowe's, which was included in our 11 sites, which is on Warner, and although they would normally be interested in that project, because we would be taking a tiny corner of their parking lot, they had their own project going, and for the foreseeable future, they were not capable of considering it, according to their corporate real estate development office.
That's understood with a big corporation, but the, you know, the argument of, if I was going to sell my property, I wouldn't enter no long-term lease, I mean, what, what an owner would do is they would capitalize that revenue, and that would actually enhance the value to any potential buyer in the future, because I would imagine, if you had a rectangle you would locate near the, you know, most likely the back end of the property, which not necessarily would interfere with the development of anything proposed, and having a long-term lease with a credit tenant like AT&amp;T, which is mailbox money, would be certainly beneficial to most people, in my personal opinion. I owned a piece of commercial property years ago, a mini storage, that came with a cell tower, and we looked at that like it was a boon, because that, that check was there every month.
In most cases, it would be, but I specifically know two examples of other projects in different cities where it fell through, because specifically, the owner was in the process of either escrow or looking for buyers, and was told by their real estate agents that they should not consider it at that time, because it would complicate the process. So, I'm, I'm not saying it automatically does, I'm just saying it could be factored in. Again, as I noted, it was speculation, they never responded to my letters.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yeah, one last question. How do you negotiate the price that you give the landlord, or the owner of the property? For example, in your presentation or your documents, you said that some property owners weren't interested. Maybe the price wasn't right. Do you offer them additional funds, or do you not offer, or how does that work?
Like the negotiation-
Yeah, negotiation.
I mean, yes, I oftentimes will offer additional funds, specifically depending on, you know, whether or not AT&amp;T would approve of the additional funds, based on the economics of each project, but in many of these cases, we, it varies. Depends on the land value, depends on where it is, it's, it's not a uniform thing, each lease is completely different.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, my turn, finally. Okay. I would like to ask Mr. Strauss to please come up to the podium now, and you can stay. You can stay. Mr. Strauss, before I ask you the question, I just want to clarify a couple of things that I had regarding AT&amp;T. Okay. Regarding the pictures and all that stuff, I personally wish that you would have done two different things for me to visualize this project. Number one, I would have liked to have seen a real cellphone tower that was at that height of another property, similar.
That's easy enough to accomplish.
Yeah. Because it's a simulation, and I don't, I don't know about the angles and all that stuff, but I wish that would have been done, so I could see a real photo of what it really looks like, instead of a mock-up.
Just to be clear, we don't usually do that specifically, I, I have no problem with doing it, we can-
Yeah.
Provide photos of other sites, but specifically because it wouldn't involve the property in question?
I know, but, but it, it's, it's like, you're telling me, here's what the mock-up would look like, but not the real thing. I would like to have seen a real- I would like to have seen a real thing.
Oh, I understand, and we can provide that, no problem. I just, it would be typical to use the mock-up.
It's just a recommendation, I'm just saying for me.
We have no problem with that whatsoever, absolutely.
And then to go on to Mr. Strauss. Okay, you're on. If you can go ahead and answer the questions on the NEPA.
Sorry, Madam Chair, you said answer.
The stuff about the CEQA, the NEPA, all that.
Yes. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, AT&amp;T is very sophisticated naturally and ought to be. And I included as Exhibit D in my letter of June 12th, copies of communications with Mr. Silverman and with the attorneys for AT&amp;T regarding NEPA. And I'll point out that Mr. Silverman stated that, quote, "To my knowledge, AT&amp;T's project is categorically exempt under NEPA because it satisfies FCC rule under 47 CFR 1.1306 and 1.1307." Now, that's a lot of numbers there, but what that means is that there was, my understanding is there's not, and we can discuss it here today, there's not an intention to do an environmental assessment. So, like the city attorney quite sort of technically pointed out, when, for instance, with CEQA, when you do CEQA, an exemption is also doing CEQA. The same is true for NEPA. If you decide NEPA doesn't apply, that is doing NEPA, that is compliance with NEPA. However, in an interest of having a fair and full conversation, I contacted AT&amp;T and AT&amp;T's counsel to notify them of the issues regarding the Cooper's Hawk and to communicate with them prior to submitting a complaint. Attached to my letter is a complaint arguing that something more than what apparently was intended and more than this biological assessment is required under the regulations of the FCC and that is an environmental assessment. If AT&amp;T does not conduct an environmental assessment and the FCC in response to the complaints that I filed on behalf of a different resident than Ms. Price determines an EA is required, that is a violation of the FCC regulations. That is not compliance with NEPA, that is not the appropriate process. Now, we may hear today that an EA is being prepared, however, I've not received any communication that effect, we've not heard that until now. So, that is sort of my quibble regarding whether NEPA compliance has occurred or not. The problem with moving forward without having determined whether the FCC will determine an EA is required is that the facility is designed in a specific way today with certain RF emission parameters, with certain trees and a certain proximity, and perhaps this location will have impacts that would be inimical to that design. So, it seems problematic to move forward on assumption that it will just be cleaned up on the back end. Now, regarding the question of how tall this, this tower can, can go, and I heard a question from Commissioner Kennedy, I, I don't agree with the notion that simply it'll all go through the permitting process and that basically sort of we can sort this out when it arrives. I do concur that AT&amp;T cannot simply build higher during the, the building process. However, and I'll just read you from federal law because it's sort of what's controlling us today, and that's 47 U.S. Code 145, which was referenced by Mr. Silverman. And that states, quote, "A state or local government may not deny and shall approve any eligible facility request for modification of an existing wireless tower or base station that does not substantially change the physical dimensions of such tower or base station." That's to say, and I'm not quoting now, may, sorry, not deny and shall approve. That means that if an applicant, AT&amp;T, or Verizon, or T-Mobile, or whoever, shows up and says, "We want to do something that does not substantially change," and the FCC regulations say substantially change is 20 feet more, more, sorry, more than 20 feet, if they say, "We want 20 feet," you don't have any control over that. So, that can happen at any point in the future. And that's not something that anyone can say whether it will happen or not. I, I understand there's a comment from a commissioner that it seems that if there's a significant gap here, well, maybe others want to show up too. I think that's a reasonable concern, but there's no analysis of, for instance, what is that shadow? What is that impact? You know, when this height is 80 feet, my understanding is that that's, 80 feet is more than the distance that, between that site and the property line. Will there be shat, overshadow, will there be considerations? At that point in time, you will not have control over that decision. It'll have been made for you. But I think it'd be most prudent therefore to consider that now in advance. I also did make the comment in my letter of the 12th, Madam Chair, that there should be photographs of components for review. For whatever reason, AT&amp;T did not supplement the letter they submitted on the 8th, did not respond to my letter, did not provide additional documentation. I don't think it's quite accurate to say-
I apologize, I do need to interrupt. This is not an open debate or opening, if you have specific questions for either of them, that's fine. I think this is going beyond the NEPA and CEQA question, so if you do have a question for the appellant about the photographs, that's fine, but I think at this point you need to ask.
Actually, I, I was rather concerned about the fact that there was, you know, as neighbors in the neighborhood and having families and the wildlife and all of that, I, I understand where you're going, but he was about to answer a question that I was going to ask, okay? And that had to do with the fact that this structure could be modified at, at least that's my understanding. Correct me, Mr. Silverman, if I'm wrong, that it could be modified once it's approved, like maybe there's 6G, 8G, 10G, or whatever, and the neighbors no longer have any say-so over that. That was problematic for me when I was reviewing the materials. So, anyway, so that, that's my comment and, yes.
Well, correct, the neighbors still would have a say.
How would they have a say?
This is still a permitting process. Mr. Strauss is stating that it just is proposed and then it's granted, but that's not true. Specifically, there are specific guidelines under which an expansion by that, that law would require, and specifically, as long as it was within those requirements, then the federal law would preempt. But again, that's a hypothetical. This is not-
No, I'm-
Just to be clear, AT&amp;T has no intention, and I've seen no notation about expanding, what AT&amp;T's goal here is to establish this site.
I understand. Okay. So, at this point, I'm done with my questions and I believe Commissioner Kennedy has a question, and then after that, Commissioner Adam. Oh. Ian.
Sorry about that. Mr. Strauss, I have a question on the NEPA. I'm, I'm gonna keep it really simple. So, assuming the NEPA process is completed and they find no impact and, and essentially they clear the project, would that, would that end your NEPA issue? Would you, would you call that issue done?
If the FCC makes a determination, it's the FCC's job to decide whether NEPA is required for their licensees. So, yes, but that process, for instance, an app, a complaint I filed in 2020 is still not resolved at the FCC. And I don't know what's typical, so I don't know how long that will take.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
So, I think at this point, we're gonna conclude the commissioners' questions, comments, and I'm gonna call for the vote at this point. Do I have a motion?
Wait, before we vote, I think I'd like to share my sort of understanding and concerns. I don't know, the other commissioners would like to do that as well?
I did.
You did, right away, yeah. Anybody else? No? If not, I, I do. So, I understand the concerns of residents and I'm not really a fan of Mr. Silverman's attitude towards the residents. I want to say thank you for showing up and being here. With that being said, I want to remind my colleagues that being appointed to the Planning Commission, we're a quasi-judicial board, so we're supposed to look at our zoning and our general plan. And if the project that's being in front of us meets that, technically, it should be approved, right? So, with that being said, this is a very difficult decision for me because I'm gonna move forward with approval because it does that, it meets the general plan and the zoning code. If the majority of the commissioners want to bump it up to the city council, that is the decision of the city, of, of the existing planning commissioners. But in itself, like, we already have towers throughout the city, we have gaps, we know that we have gaps with what was presented to us. And I think that overall, it's just user experience. My concern is also that if we set a precedent for existing denial today, what's gonna happen when it goes in the next neighborhood? Are we gonna deny that one as well? Right? And then what happens if the existing neighborhood doesn't have the financial means to, to, to submit a denial of a project or appeal of a project, right? So, those are my concerns that, that I have. I don't know if any of the other commissioners want to sort of share their experience, but based off of that, I'm gonna move with approval. Again, I, I'm not a fan of, of the way Mr. Silverman reached, said, you know, that the community is a little, you know, I know that what little of a community makes a big difference and I appreciate that you came and you spoke, but with that being said, I'm, I'm going to move forward with approval. And again, if the majority of the commission wants to bump it up to city council, let city council make that decision. At the end of the day, they have that freedom to do so, so, thank you.
Okay. So, we have a motion, and could you repeat your motion, please?
Mr. Ian has a-
Okay.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna echo the same sentiment. Commissioner Rodriguez, I, I don't really like the tact involved, but our job is to determine, is it compliance with zoning, is it compliance with general plan? That's the boundaries that we're being asked to look at it. There's things we are asked to not consider, those are not, I don't have control over that, so, I'm in same vote. I'm not, I'm not happy with this decision, but I will be voting to approve it and if city council and others want to send it up where you, you, you can, you have that ability. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Commissioner Kennedy.
Yes. With that being said, what I would like to do is make a motion to continue this until we get the NEPA results because I believe that is important. And, you know, a, as the attorney said, when you start the machine, it's very difficult to stop the machine. So, what is the rush? You've got potentially an approved CUP if the NEPA results are nonexistent negatively. So, I would, I want to make a motion to continue this for two reasons. I'd like to see the results of the NEPA study because I think it's super important. And secondly, personally, I do not think that you diligently work to contact the two people that have, in my opinion, a far better location, the vacant lot on Beach Boulevard. I, I drove it today and looked at it, it's ideal, and I think anybody in their right mind that owns that piece of property would be willing to at least discuss, and if they tell you no, so be it. But, and then the other property across the street, I believe is owned by Harden Hyundai because I have software that can show me who the, the ownership is, and, and I don't see why they wouldn't extend a conversation. If they tell you no, that's fine, but I, I would like to have our applicant come back and say that they were able to contact those property owners with better locations and they gave them a definitive no. I would feel a lot more comfortable at that point voting to approve, and that's something that I think can be handled. So, I would make a motion to delay the, the vote until we have NEPA findings and conclusive, you know, affirmation that you did locate those, those two property owners, and I would work diligently help you. I, I think I can help you because I, I believe they are able to be reached.
And Commissioner Kennedy, I do need to point out that there is an issue that would, that would expose the city to liability because under federal law, there is a shot clock that we have to make a decision upon these applications within a certain timeframe. So, if we continue this past 150 days from when the application was submitted, that would expose the city to-
Where are we on the shot clock?
Compliant with, under federal law.
And I think the, I think the applicant provided-
It was like July 22nd or something like that, correct?
And I'm pretty sure he would not get through the NEPA process in time, so, without some sort of stipulation or agreement from the applicant, we wouldn't be able to, to move on with the shot clock. The other piece, though, as far as contacting the owners, I mean, that's, if there's a motion and a second on that, I think-
Then let me withdraw that. I would make a motion that we get a definitive effort to contact the two property owners that, in my opinion, have far better utilization opportunity for AT&amp;T. It's not that I'm against the tower. I, I think an optimal commercial site with limited residential exposure is a far better site. And personally, I believe one of the property owners is local because he has a Huntington Beach address. Maybe we can door knock him, or you can, because I can assure you, whether he says yes or no, he's reachable. So, I would like to make a motion that we delay the, the final vote until we at least have an affirmation that the two sites on Beach Boulevard have been affirmed as a negative or a positive, and I guess we can't wait for the NEPA results. But it is conclusive that if the NEPA results aren't, show finding, that the project ends. Is that, is that factual?
If they don't receive NEPA clearance, they won't get their FCC license and therefore we wouldn't issue a building permit.
Okay. So, obviously, with that shot clock, there has to be some level of urgency to get those findings for AT&amp;T's sake, but, you know, I, I, I don't know how to formally make the motion, but regarding the, the item 23-435, I would make a motion to delay the vote until we have an affirmation that the two property owners in Huntington Beach with, in my opinion, superior locations have been identified, personally attended to for a yes or no answer.
Okay. At this point, Commissioner Acosta Galvitt?
Can we put a timeframe on that?
Yeah. I was gonna say, I have a concern, I'm worried it might not get agendized and back here in time since that's a little over a month. Would that be a concern with staff?
You can add a timeframe.
I mean, there certainly would be logistical constraints we have noticing while it would be continued to a date. We, we, we would most likely need to renotice, so we would need everything resolved at least 10 days in advance of the hearing, or more importantly, the shot clock date. There could be other challenges, but there, there's a limited window, I would say, probably within the next two weeks. It would have to be resolved and the information provided to the city so we could prepare for a hearing and comply with all the noticing requirements to come back before the shot clock expired.
And if I could just add, I think we're gonna, another component would be if the applicant is unable to reach those property owners, they're, for whatever reason, they're, I mean, he tried once, if they're gone, you know, if they're out of the state, if whatever reason, two weeks goes by and he can't reach them, then what happened?
Okay. Commissioner Twining.
Yes, thank you. I, I, I respect what Commissioners Rodriguez and, and Commissioner Adam has said, but there, it is a legitimate reason, you know, I read all this, I, you know, my first read through of everything here, I, I said to myself, well, what's it coming before us for? Because there's nothing we can do. Look at all the, look at all the federal laws. And as I read it more and more and more, I said, well, there is, there is three things that, that I, that I consider legitimate reasons to, to uphold the, the, you know, the rejection or the, you know, basically reject the project. And, you know, I'll repeat them, I mean, and I think these are legitimate reasons. Well, I'll change it. The neighborhood doesn't want it. Basically, the neighborhood doesn't want it. These, I, I like, I like connectivity, I'm on the internet all the time, but it's working Nobody, not in my knowledge, nobody's complained. I said, I got over 30 letters in, you know, against the, the, the project. I got zero that were supporting the project. I mean, in my mind, and I, and I totally understand what you, what you said, Oscar, yeah, I just, you know, I know that, that, you know, our hands are tied here a little bit, but I, I'm, I'm concerned about kicking the ball, you know, kicking the can down the road here and coming back and having this, you know, okay, let's say NEPA comes out, great, and the two owners on, you know, the two property owners on Beach say, no, no, I don't, I don't want to do it. We're gonna be back here arguing this thing again in a month. So, my, my objection to the, to the, to the project stands, so, thank you.
Okay. So, at this point, we have one, two motions on the floor, and I believe Mr., or Commissioner Adams seconded it. Is that, is that what you did, Mr. Adams?
We, we haven't made any motions yet.
He did.
No, I didn't.
Oh, you did, okay. All right. So, is there a motion?
So, I'd like, I would like to make a motion as, as agendized, but I know there was another motion that I think Kennedy wanted to- that I think Kennedy wanted to say.
It's two different motions.
Okay, well, I'll move forward with my motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item 23-435, Appeal of the Zoning Administrator's Approval of Conditional Use Permit Number 23-006, Huntington Beach Community Church Wireless Communication Facility.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
I have a substitute motion. I would like to make a motion to not approve staff's recommendation due to the aesthetics, the visual disturbance. And do I have a second?
Point of order. Do we have to make a vote on the first motion first?
I'm over, I'm doing yours. No.
May I? Legal?
Yes, we can vote on the substitute motion first. And then if the substitute motion fails to pass, we would go back.
Okay, now I have to do them.
Can we confirm if there's a second on the substitute motion?
I second that.
Okay. So Commissioner Twining seconded my substitute motion. And I will call for the vote. Wait. Okay. Okay, thank you. So we're voting on the substitute motion at this point. To deny, yes.
Okay, we have three ayes and three nays. Commissioners Kostakalvin, Commissioner Adam, and Rodriguez voting no. Motion fails.
Okay, we go back to the original motion, which is, can you restate the motion, please?
Point of order, Madam Chair?
Yes.
My understanding is that because of the de novo hearing, they're asking a majority in favor of the project.
Right, but that was on my substitute motion. Now it goes back to the original motion.
No, excuse me. Under city regulations, on appeal from the zoning administrator, when there's a tie vote, the decision of the lower body is sustained. Right now, we would go to the original motion, and we can see if that carries or not. But in the event of a tie, no, that's not correct.
Thank you, Mr. Highland.
Okay.
Would you like me to restate the motion? I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item 23-435, Appeal of the Zoning Administrator Approval of Conditional Use Permit Number 23-006, Huntington Beach Community Church Wireless Communication Facility.
And the second is?
It's done.
Okay. We have to wait till things get typed in, right? Okay, there we go. Okay, I'll call for the vote.
We have three ayes and three nays. Chair Pellman, Vice Chair Twining, Commissioner Kennedy voting nay. And Commissioner Wood is absent.
Under city regulations, since we only have six commissioners here on the, on an appeal from the zoning administrator, when there's a tie vote, the decision of the lower body, which is the zoning administrator, is sustained.
Okay, so what happens at this point?
At this point, the decision of the zoning administrator is sustained. And if they want, we, the appellant can appeal it to the City Council.
Okay, and?
Chair Pellman, can I just read the appeal language into the record? Just to make the public aware. The decision of the Planning Commission is appealable to the City Council within 10 calendar days. An appeal must include reasons for such appeal, any required fee, and shall be filed with the City of Huntington Beach City Clerk's Office within 10 days' appeal period.
Thank you. And then the last motion, do I even, the last motion that was made by Commissioner Kennedy? I know, but I have to address it.
I believe it had already been acted on.
Yeah, okay. All right, so at this point, you guys, everybody knows what has to happen at this point. If the neighbors, the homeowners, wish to appeal it, they may. Otherwise, the zoning recommendation is approved, right? Is that correct? Is that how you would state it?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so at this point, we're going on to the consent calendar. And next, we have the minutes on the consent calendar this evening. Are there any edits or comments to the minutes? Okay, so let's continue with the meeting. Are there any edits to the minutes? Hearing note, edits to the Planning Commission meeting minutes of April 25, 2023. I would like to ask for if there's a motion to approve.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item 23-471, Approved Planning Commission Minutes dated April 25, 2023.
Okay, I need a second. Oh, you did, okay. Okay, and I will call for the vote. Do you need a minute, Mr. Quaid? Okay, you're ready. Okay, all those in favor?
I just want to double-check the stuff. I need to abstain from this one. Is that right? I was absent.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, we have five ayes. Commissioner Wood is absent. Commissioner Kostakalvin is abstaining. Motion carries.
Thank you. At this point, we have non-public hearing items. We have none. So next on the agenda are planning items. And I would like to ask staff to please give a report.
Yeah, I just wanted to give the commission an indication that we do have two projects tentatively scheduled for the next hearing on the 27th. We're working to confirm the availability of some of their consultants, so it is tentative at this time. But we do plan to have another meeting. So just wanted to make you aware. Schedule-wise, the second meeting of the month we're planning on having. And we are working on a number of long-range planning projects related to updating some codes and some direction we've received from council on various items. And I expect they will be coming before you guys over the summer. So just to make you aware.
Can you tip us off on what's in two weeks?
It's not on the agenda, so I'd rather not get into the details of the project, so.
Okay, I've just been getting some emails, so anyway.
So Matt, on the, on the long-range stuff, is it like LCP stuff? Is it general plan stuff? Was it internal?
We have a broad zoning code update. We are working on a zoning map, general plan map, consistency update project. And then there are a few H items we've received from council that we're working on as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. Thank you. Before we close for the evening, planning commissioners, do you have any comments to provide? And we'll start with Commissioner Kostakalvin. No comments. Okay. Commissioner Rodriguez?
No comments, thank you.
I have no comments?
I just want to say, that was our, that was our first split vote in six months, and I want to say it was, it was a good debate. So thanks for being so respectful. Thanks for being so respectful. That was great. Democracy at work.
Commissioner Kennedy.
My only thought would be, in fairness to residents, that economically, things are tight. Like, if somebody goes to the expense and time to file an appeal here and it now gets kicked upstream, to have them re-feed is absurd. I get waiving the fees is not prudent. You know, I've heard people say, hey, can we waive the initial fee? But when somebody takes the time to put their hard-earned dollars to work, hire that attorney, spend that $12,000, they should be entitled to just go ahead. All the next appeal is going to be is a voice at the podium and let the City Council. So to put the burden of economic strain on these people, you saw them, they're done. They gave up, okay? So they don't get the benefit of the City Council's deliberation. It could have went the other way, it might not have. But the fact is, it was restrained economically. I think that's completely out of line.
Commissioner Adam.